I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this law with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the flag begin.
Bid result, contract 2009-06 Vehicle Exhaust Extraction System.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, the following bid was received and opened by the deputy clerk of the mayor and Mike LeBlanc, present. Air Technology Solutions Incorporated from Burlington, New Jersey. The total amount of their bid was $37,500. They did have a bid bond attached. Deviates from the requirements of the contract and delivery was 45 days. The second bid was from Air Cleaning System Incorporated from Latham, New York. The total amount of that bid was $48,911. A check was attached. There were no deviations and delivery was 90 days. And Mike LeBlanc submitted a recommendation to the board and he gave his reasons, his evaluation of the Air Technology Solutions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Air Technology Solutions bid for $37,500.
No, that's not the recommendation.
Oh, it's not the recommendation?
No.
Oh, excuse me, I read that wrong.
There's deviations in the other bid. They don't want to go with it.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, okay.
Would Mike like to go with the Air Cleaning Systems?
Oh, okay, I read that wrong. Okay, let me take that back. What do you call that?
That's okay, just...
I'll make a motion to accept the Air Cleaning Systems for $48,911. My apologies.
I got the second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? For the record, just for the record, that first bidder at $37,500 had several, several deviations from the contract and that's the reason why you should keep protecting it. Anything else? All those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Comments from the public at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board may do so at this time. If there is nobody wishes to address the board at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. This is the previous meeting of May 4th, regular meeting. You all have copies of the minutes? Any additions or deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of May 4th.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills? You all have copies of the bills. Is there any additions or deletions?
We have one addition this evening. It's for the New York Power Authority, a monthly bill with an amount of $78,818.79.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, the report of the mayor and trustees.
I've got correspondence if you want me to do it.
Oh, good. I'm sorry, I didn't have anything in my bucket at that point.
The first item I have is from Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number One Incorporated to the mayor and trustees. There have been numerous incidents over the years on Lake Champlain where a fire rescue boat would have proven to be very beneficial to the Roses Point Fire Department. Due to budget constraints, funds to purchase a fire rescue boat were not available. However, it is with great pleasure that I am able to inform you that through the numerous fundraising activities and generosity of our community, members of Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company Number One Incorporated recently purchased a brand-new 2009 18-foot fire rescue boat and trailer. This fire rescue boat will be available to help us protect and save life and property. At our last business meeting held on Monday, May 11, 2009, members unanimously approved to turn ownership of this fire rescue boat and trailer over to the village of Roses Point as another piece of apparatus for the Roses Point Fire Department. The only stipulation associated with the turnover of this equipment is that the village of Roses Point must not sell or salvage this fire rescue boat and trailer without the written approval of the members of the Montgomery Hose Hook and Ladder Company. We thank you for your continued support of our company and trust that the village of Roses Point will accept this fire rescue boat, including the trailer, with above aforementioned stipulation. That's from Dennis Roberts.
All right, Doug. I'll make a motion to accept the new vote with the stipulations and adjournments as amended.
Moved by trustees Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is from Angelo's Pizza and Grill Incorporated. As per alcoholic beverage control, section 64 and 109, it is our requirement to inform you of our intent to renew our liquor license. The liquor license serial number is 2126966, bond number 43145653. The term begins July 1, 2009, and expires June 30, 2010. That's from Constantine, reference. That's just notification. The next item I have is to whom it may concern. On June 13, 2009, we would like to use Roses Point Rec Park from 1:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. for a going-away party for our son who is being deployed to Afghanistan. We would also like to waive a waiver of the open container for the length of the party. Thank you, Ann and June Lomore.
I'll make a motion to allow Ann and June Lomore to request a waiver of the open container lock for the party on June 13.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I just received this evening was Dear Mayor Rivers. We would like to have a family picnic at the Roses Point Recreational Center on Saturday, May 30, 2009. We are planning to start around 11:00 a.m. and will finish up around 5:00 p.m. We will pick up all garbage and leave the grounds as we found them. We respectfully request that the village board waive the alcohol consumption restriction on village property for the day at the recreation center. We wish to thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter. Thank you for your dedication and service to the village residents. Norman Lay, L-A-G-U-E, patrol agent in charge at Champlain, still the board patrol.
I'll make a motion...
No, you can't. That's a... No, you can't.
Okay, maybe I shouldn't. I'll make a motion to allow the party on May 30 here at the rec center. Waive the open container lock.
I second it.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion?
Only if we get invited.
I'll get two parties on the schedule.
John, he's in the board patrol.
11:00.
Is it open in the station?
You gotta understand that he belongs to the board patrol. You should not make a motion to the board patrol.
Oh, I haven't got my board trial, eh?
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, anything else, Carol?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Reports of the mayor and board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is request permission to sign the agreement with the village engineer.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement with the village engineer.
I need a second for discussion.
I'll second it.
You got it, Carol?
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
There is. I'd like to look at the contract. First of all, firstly, I'm not happy with the services that we get from Mr. Burke. And in the budget, the year, the engineering contract that we have already said in 2000, or you proposed $26,000? What was that? Is that...
That's based on 23 hours a month.
Okay. In his contract, he's asking for 35 hours a month. And who says that we need that 35 hours a month? Number one. And it's at $95 an hour. And in here, in his contract, there's work to be performed, routine scuba diving services and inspections. I think that we can get some of that. We have local people here that are scuba divers and have worked on the village. We're looking at one intake to be cleaned probably on a, like a quarterly basis, or it could be six-month basis to take all the debris and the crap off our screens. I don't think that we need the services of an engineer to do that. You know, I don't see where we need to guarantee him 35 hours a month for paying that $95 an hour. I think that would be my first request and we've got budget at only $26,000. And he's asking for, I think it comes down to like 45 or 49 and 95 times 35. Like $32,000. I don't think we need to guarantee him 35 hours. I mean, it's one thing I'm on a return when we need them, but I don't think we need to guarantee him all those hours.
No.
I say if you want to keep them, your honor, and everybody else, we can keep his services, but only we call him when we need him, not guarantee 35 hours. That would be my first...
That's why the hours were reduced in the budget. Because we can board five days and we're not going to have to have him as much. Is that accurate? We had budget last year, because I don't have last year's budget.
Yeah, last year's budget, you had 37,800.
How many hours, as he said?
Uh, no. I don't have that. Modified budget. Well, 37...
I know, I know we haven't paid that at all.
Pardon?
I know we haven't paid that at all.
So he's trying to get us to sign him for 35 hours a month then?
And we don't think we need him that much.
Well, I don't mind. Okay.
No, I mean, negotiate is if he wants to...
You know, we use him for other things than just that shortening stuff. He did all the engineering on the library roof. Did all that. He did the engineering on the library sidewalk. Did the... A lot of the... He did all the inspection engineering on the pier. His firm, not just yet, it's a firm.
Well, I know, but we're paying the firm $95 an hour?
I don't know what we're paying him.
Well, that's if we use his services. I mean...
Paying an engineer $95 an hour and look at a roof and you got two excellent lifetime carpenters looking at a roof, you don't need him up there. I don't know.
Well, and then, you know, like we had paving issues. We went down Maple Street and how many of those water taps that we weren't able to find? And he was supposed to have an engineer on site when they were zapping the road?
Don't blame him. I'm sorry. He was not the engineer on that job, John. That was... Tisdale.
No, no, just recently we did that, didn't we? Was it, we didn't have an engineer on the site? How about when we were doing the gazebo and he was supposed to be watching how the Wood Brothers was pouring the cement and they had poured the wire down and they didn't bother raising the wire to be included in the cement and we took pictures of that.
I don't remember that.
Well, I do, Benny's got pictures of it and I was there. And his engineering company that we paid every day to sit there while Wood Brothers was doing it was getting, he had a guy there. He wasn't, he didn't say anything to him? We mentioned...
John, let's stop it right here. I'll negotiate. It'll be great. You have a very dislike for Doug and I know that, so we'll just let it go with that.
All right.
Well, we'll table it and then tell them to come back with another. Okay.
Well, I'm not the only one, your honor. I just want to mention that.
Yeah, but there's been a lot of bad stuff put out there that shouldn't have happened. Request permission to attend a 100th annual NICON meeting and you all got things of it? Is anybody interested in going? It is from, uh... June something.
June 28.
June, uh, June 28 through July 1. I can't go. Am I out? I'm already registered to go, but...
I'd like to go, but I don't think I can.
Okay. Is there any permission for me to go?
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to attend the 100th annual NICON meeting and June 20, the dates are June 28 through 7/1.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Is there any other...
Maybe.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I've had a bad day. I'll make it later.
I know, it's the flame your dirt and stuff.
There's other things. Any other discussion? If there be no discussion, all those in favor, vote that you use the sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. The treasurer has a budget modification. Did it take a week to read this?
No. This is just to bring the budget back into line.
Yeah.
Whereas the board of trustees is advised able to make certain modifications to the 2008, 2009 village budget, it therefore resolved that the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for fiscal year 2008, 2009. Under the general fund, we are going to increase our estimated revenues $41,679. Increase account 599. Appropriative fund balance $11,079. Increase in account 960, the appropriations for $53,458. Under the water fund, we are going to increase account 510, estimated revenues $47,865. Increase the appropriations $47,865. Most of that is due to the damage that was incurred with the power when we had that problem. Sewer, we're going to increase, increase and decrease appropriations $8,000. Library fund, account 510, estimated revenues increase $400. We're going to increase appropriative fund balance $1,929. Increase account 960 appropriations $2,0329. And the civic center, you're going to increase account 960 appropriative fund balance for $1416. And increase account 599 appropriations for $1416. The numbers are backwards.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the budget modification.
Seconded. Moved by trustee Burks, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
In your packet, there's a resolution to support the construction of the four-lane highway St. Lawrence, Lewis Franklin Jefferson in Clinton County. I... It's just a resolution to support, so I'd like to make, somebody make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Make a motion to pass the resolution to support the construction of the four-lane highway in the St. Lawrence, Lewis Franklin Jefferson in Clinton County.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Burks, seconded by trustee Cooper. Is there any discussion? If there be no discussion, it's going to be a roll call vote. Roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
I'm going to vote against it.
No. Why?
Because it's going to throw a budget. Where did you get the financing from?
That's not gross.
I know, I...
It's the federal government doing this.
No, I'm voting against it.
Trustee Burks.
Oh.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
I don't care. I don't agree with him. Throw down the budget deficit.
Okay, supplement. Okay, discussion of local government consolidation. Do you all have copies of that? It's, uh... The state of New York is, um, the attorney general of the state of New York, he wants to get passed through law to allow villages to dissolve or towns to dissolve or counties to dissolve, whatever. But anyway, the uniform senator requires 10% of the registered voters or 5,000, whichever is less. They want to change that because what it used to be is one-third of the registered voters. They want to make it less. The conference of mayors are against this. All the towns, all the villages are against it, villages in cities. Actually, reducing it from 33% to 10%. So 10% of the voters could change what was going on. I don't think that's right. I think if you're going to dissolve, it could be up, you know, rent up for the voters, not just 10%.
I agree with you there. I'm bringing it up to the vote.
I think they want us to...
They just want us to send letters to...
Letters of opposing this to Patterson, Como, Smith, Laco, our senator, our assemblyman, Southern Silvers, Knob, all the big shots in Albany. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Support the conference of mayors.
The conference of mayors.
Seconded. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee...
Baker.
Baker. Baker.
As I've been told, sending the letters to the representatives here?
Yes, I represent, so. Stern letter, too. Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote that you use the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Oh, that's it for me. Trustee Burks.
Trustee Burks?
No. Trustee Jefferson.
Nothing on my agenda.
Nothing, that's why. I didn't see anything there.
You want to discuss that transportation book?
Pass.
Recommend the position for the library technician's position. I think we have Ms. Pollard here from the library here to maybe to give us a, an announcement that we've chosen somebody?
I have her here.
All right.
I got a letter. You get a letter?
Yeah.
Hey, you seen me or nothing? I got me somewhere.
This morning.
That's the, your file there, Mr. Burke?
No, it's not there. I haven't had anything. I was there right early this morning.
Oh, I was in your basket couple days ago.
There. Now you're... Anywho, I have a recommendation.
Yes, the library board of trustees met last week at their regular meeting and we went into executive session. They invited me in to discuss the applications with them and the person they decided on that fit the criteria was Donna Boemel. And they would like to be the recommender for the position. Leader for the position.
The board has spoken and I will make the recommendation that the new employee will be Donna Boemel.
I think it's July 1.
July 1.
July 1.
Somebody to that job.
June 1.
Can we appoint him? So it's only like a year, say from now to June 30th, so we can approve this every year in case the village has a downturn. Maybe get us tied in a four-year contract here.
No, I don't think so. Carol, that's a civil service position.
It's like any civil service position.
It's going to be a, it's going to be a competitive civil service position.
Right.
Watch it, if they pass and it's fit and...
Yeah, but what if, make sure the board of the library doesn't like who they got?
Well, they gotta have darn good reason to get rid of it.
Well, I'm not, that's what I'm saying. So what are we getting involved in here? So we're making money this year or we're breaking even or something, but you know, we have a bad...
No, what happens like in it, if I might say, any position that we have in the village, if we decide that the next year we don't want to fund that position, like the police department, we have to abolish the position. In other words, when the budget comes up, if we decide at one time we no longer want justice in the village anymore, we can, well, that's a little different story. But let's say we want to do away with a police officer or we want to do with a person at the rec center, we abolish the position. You abolish the position, it's no longer funded, the person is going to be temporarily laid off, the position's no longer there. That's the way it works.
Eliminating the social person.
If, if... Every year you can do the same thing with any department. You decide that next year you don't want a rec maintenance worker or you don't want a recreation manager, you do away with the position.
To answer your question, if the library board decides they don't want it, they got to have excellent reasons why not. Because civil...
Is this person going to have probation for the first year?
Except for the first six months probation. Within that six months probation, I believe there's...
Yeah, it's a probationary period and there's an exam that has to be passed, right?
Yes.
If the person does not meet, she meets the qualifications, if the civil service gives her an exam, she does not pass it, she no longer has the position. If the library board is not happy with her serving, then they have to document it like we would any worker that we have in the village, has to be documented. If they're not performing after probation for six months, they can be terminated.
Let me ask you a question. We should have more control over this because, you know, like to say, if next year, if we have to, I mean, everybody's going to have a feeling if we just decide to unfund it. You know, it all depends on the position the village is in.
Well, yeah, that's like anything. If the village is broke, then we have to look back at cutting back services. That's any position.
Yeah, we can, we can lay them off. Abolish their job.
You can abolish the job. And that's, if you're in a downturn, yeah, you can do that at any time.
Yeah, you can abolish a job half with six months tenure.
But if you're talking, if you're speaking directly to the person that's appointed, if the library board at some point decides that they no longer, if they no longer want her services, they'll have to make sure that they back them up.
Prostites and doctorize.
Yep.
Yes.
But the library, I'm sure, has looked at all the applications. I didn't get into the process because I thought it would be...
Should we appoint anybody before they take the test?
It's called a provisional, it's called a provisional appointment.
Yeah, what if somebody else wants to take the test with them?
So they can.
Oh, they can.
They can.
They can.
That's the risk that you run.
And if they score, and say this person does not score, right, and this other person does, we are almost compelled to hire them.
Almost, but you do have a free person, um...
A free person list.
List, yeah.
And then we can make a go with resident.
Priority, yes.
A priority. And this person is a go with resident.
So I just want to get this clear so that, because I got a little bit confused. So a year from now, there's two scenarios that, say, one, if the position's not working out. So if we decide that we're not going to fund it next year, we still have the option. You can do that? Abolish the position.
Every year. Keep in mind though, you'll be paying unemployment insurance.
Okay. And then say the worst possible scenario that we go deeper into the recession that we're into now and the budget really gets tight, we do do the same thing, we have to abolish the position? You have to abolish it.
You can all the unemployment insurance, whether they're working or not, you play that year round.
Well, you don't. Not with the village.
Not with the village? See, I have...
Is that John?
I play unemployment, I don't pay unemployment whether they were working or not working, you just go pay them. The village says they don't pay.
I didn't know that.
Oh, and they actually lay somebody out. Yeah. Call them to pay.
Okay. Any other discussion, board? You made the motion. You made the motion. Who seconded it? I'll second it. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Now, that is a provisional...
It has to be.
Yes, I'm just letting you know, that's provisional title until the civil service test is passed.
And she'll commence on July 1st, 2000. And please welcome her aboard.
Hopefully, yes, or do you want to know now? What the board wants her to do is to be June 1st to June 30th, the part-time person. But every time she clocks in, she will put admin next to her time so that you'll know that she's there. Because she's still got her other job until the end of the month.
So she'll just be working the part-time position until July 1st?
Right. So that'll be saving you guys some money.
She works part-time in the weather. And she works in the school as a special education.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, both by your side of the aisle?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Irish, huh?
Thank you. And Walter Moore. All of the discussion.
Supplemental, or no, it's not your recommendation.
Request an executive session to discuss electrical personnel.
Second? Moved by trustee Burts, seconded by trustee Jefferson. All vote, trustee Jefferson. Aye, trustee Burts.
Aye.
Trustee Baker. Aye, trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have?
Thank you, trustee Burts. Trustee Baker?
Well, the first thing on my agenda is, the only thing I made, isn't it, is the discussion with Civic Center Sealed. My opinion is, I'd like to make a motion to vote for the fellow from Lake Placid, Lake Placid phone. For two, one hundred, he's still a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, right?
Well, it won't be, it, it won't be...
Last year, we were gonna break it down, huh?
Break it down, we're gonna do everything but that fire retardant paint until I come up with the right paint. Well, you gotta, you gotta understand too, treasurer really needs to know what we're doing here because...
We have to bond the money.
And it don't do ways about it, we're gonna get part of the money, but we're not gonna get it all. Yeah, we already authorized the treasurer go out to bond. I don't think they want to go out to bond three or four times.
Well, I haven't done anything yet, because I've been waiting to the final...
I know, that's what I understand. The next day or so, we have, well, tomorrow, we bet we hold this guy.
I called him, left him a message, told him to get ahold of the clerk in the morning as soon as possible. We can have an answer to the reply retardant paint.
George?
Yeah.
Do you make a statement as to what we're doing here? Like, the public is not aware we're having a problem with the Civic Center.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't said too much about it, you're probably right, John. What's going on is that, as you know, the roof leaked. And then it caused problems that spray-on paper insulation we had got wet. And then it started to fall. And then it just turned out it started to develop mold. So it's all gotta come out. So this contract is to take it out, dispose of it, which we found is no problem. We can go rake the landfill, no problem. To spray on an inch and a half of foam insulation, which would seal everything. First of all, you've got to, the rust spots, you're gonna have to seal them with a primer paint. And then spray this insulation, inch and a half foam on, and then it's got to have a fire-retarded paint on the top of it. And it's gotta meet certain code, and that's where we're at to hang up, it's a fire retardant paint. So basically, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, now, the I E P is gonna pay for the lights, the new lights over there, right?
If we put them in. We may not put the new lights in with this. You know, that's, that'll come afterwards anyway. But they'll also...
We're gonna get a partial...
They'll also pay, I think, for the spore insulation. For the removal of the material. Or the fire-retarded paint, because they're not energy, not considered energy savings.
Let's see, about seventy-seven thousand, was it?
I will see, we can get up to seventy thousand.
Up to seventy thousand.
So you wanna go everywhere except the last step to the paint. Okay, I'll make the motion then tonight. Yeah, we'll go ahead with the contract for Lake Placid, the firm from Lake Placid. But the only condition is, is the last one is the paint. We're gonna wait, talk with them on that, so I'll put that in the form of a motion tonight to award the contract to the company from Lake Placid. Three, three of, three of four steps. Four steps, we're gonna have to decide later with Nikki, so we'll award three legs of the contract, or three sections of the contract. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Discussion, and I think the public should know this because of the amount of money. This did not have to go out of bid, this is an emergency procedure. And that's the reason why. We have to get that mold out of here before July, before they have that dance here.
They play the dance?
So, have the dance. Have the dance, yeah. Well, anyway, that's, that's, you know, it's considered an emergency procedure, we do not have to go out of bid. Okay, that being said, any other discussion?
Who made the second, I'm here.
I am. Just to make it clear, it looks like this is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, right? The I E P is gonna give us up to seventy thousand, so the cost of the village is...
How much is, how much is the insulation?
The insulation? The foam retardant paint?
Spray-on insulation.
Seventy thousand. Seventy thousand, so they're gonna pay for that.
Yeah.
I E P.
Yeah.
So...
How much did you say it was?
We're getting one eighty-nine thousand.
I get fifty-eight thousand for the...
Fifty-eight, seventy thousand, twenty-seven, eight hundred, and thirty-three for foam retardant paint.
Twenty-seven, eight, okay, that's it.
Well, that's the option.
That's the option that...
So it's twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
So it's actually seventy, it's fifty-eight thousand for the...
Fifty-eight thousand?
Placid foam, the foam insulation's clean and prepping.
Right.
And then it's seventy thousand for the plastic foam insulation, the one and a half inch foam.
Right.
The twenty-seven, eight is, it's gonna be a different price on that because we need the flame retardant.
Yeah, we know that.
Right?
That's what we're gonna warn them.
You're talking right now a hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Right.
Yeah, but we need to get a figure tomorrow for that other paint, and the cut sheets on it. Because our senate needs to know the total figure.
And, and there is also, there's one section there, if you saw on the price for the portion of the job, it could rise if it's more than ten thousand square feet of rustic metal is found, when the K-13 is removed. Just so you're aware of that, if you missed it.
Yeah, he got up and looked at it, and that's what he thought it was gonna be around that.
So it's realistic, but there's a possibility there could be, you know...
The option was the sidewalks. Cleaned foam and fire-retarded paint to the same specs as the roof, applied to the gable ends and sidewalks is another thirty-three thousand.
Right. That's an option.
That's an option.
Right, now, let's get the, the side, the dome down as far as that first, so...
And then all we have to do is worry about the paint later, we have to just tell them to, we need different paint.
He knows he needs the paint. I'm sure if he's had the one, he'll get the other.
Exactly. Okay, any other discussion?
So, it's fifty-eight, seventy, and...
Carol, don't worry about the figures now, because we gotta get that other figure so that our senate gets a total figure.
But the village's share won't be more than a hundred thousand.
Could, could be more.
Well, when I, Craig gave me authorization, go out to up to a hundred thousand dollars.
We did nothing. No author, it's all we give, it's all the search in to get ready to go out, authorize, go out to bond.
Right. We didn't put a figure in there.
No, we didn't put a figure in there.
We were gonna at first, but then we said, well, we're gonna, we're gonna reopen.
Like that. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, both by your side of the aisle?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it? Trustee Baker?
That's it for me.
That is enough. Trustee Cooper?
I'm a little cheaper. I'd like to make a motion to authorize performance on the shared to travel all the way to the annual calibration of our rigars and our data system.
Any second? Moved by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by your side of the aisle?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, George, my second item is, just to update you on where we're at on our new hire. We've advertised in the paper, we received some, some forms, so we got about five of them in there now as far as applications go. We're hoping to get a few more. The closing date will be the twentieth, and as soon as we decide to get a recognition from the building superintendent, when we make a mind, we'll make a recognition to the board on the hire.
It'll do process probably.
That would be what, the first, the first meeting in June, right?
Yeah. You should have an answer by then.
Yeah. Very good. That is trustee Cooper?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I was keeping the Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Baker over there.
Madam clerk?
Um, the only thing I have is that, if anybody hasn't noticed, we don't have our flowers up yet, but they will be coming hopefully this week for downtown. And they wanted to wait till the frost hopefully is gone.
Freeze tonight? July 4th, when I'm on, put them up. Thanks, Carol. Our senate?
I just want to report that Becky and I went to Village of Champlain last week, Thursday, I think it was, to do software training with our new tax programe of accounting. And the tax bills have been ordered, and hopefully they're gonna be ordered.
And they come in, hey, you only got, at the end of the month, to get them out?
Taxes are reduced, it'll go fine.
Um, done it?
That's, we're in the period where you can sign up for budget billing if you want us to, you can have the utility bill. I believe they have, they have a month of the last stage to sign up for that, things are interesting.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, I have basically just one thing. Back in '07, the mayor and myself met with Mark Buckhold, Buckhardt. He's from, he's an engineer from CTE Rail about, about putting the Champlain Plastics line underground two spans. And we wrote back correspondence to him and said that we would not do anything until we have all our easements in hand. And we do have easements, and everything is done. So he emailed me Saturday and wanted to know what the next step was. So I just wanted to inform the board, the next step for us is to draw them up a design guideline and a billing for us to do this, because it would be at their expense. And a timetable, I'm looking like at toward the fall, is to put two spans, two pole line, there's two spans of the pole line underground. So if the board has any concerns or doubts or changes, they need to let me know.
You all, do you all know what that, John?
No, we're...
You know.
You're gonna bore underneath the tracks?
No, we're not boring underneath the tracks.
Oh, where they unload the railcars?
Where, where?
And his records takes the containers off?
Yeah.
The clerks, to him, is not high enough when they have a double stack for his lift. So he's been out to CTE to put that underground, oh, Champlain Plastics. So CTE has agreed to pay for it, but they haven't got the press yet.
Whole possibility, anything, so I said, I'd look at our prices and see how the commodities look. We'll have to raise up the price maybe eight, ten, twelve percent, whatever, you know, the...
We would charge them materials, man-hours, equipment hours, if we, the full cost to the CTE Rail for any of the work that we do up there.
You don't need a motion on that, I don't think.
I just wanted to inform you, so if you see some correspondence go back and forth about prices and costs, it's not, it's gonna reflect on our budget. And I'm looking at like maybe fall as a timeline. We have our other projects that we have going this summer, and we are going full steam ahead on them, so we're making good progress.
Which are... You think anytime this summer before the Fourth of July, we might, I mentioned last week, or last meeting, I don't know if you were here or not?
I wasn't here.
Uh, to have perpendicular parking lines painted on Route 11 or Montgomery Street for parking? You know, in front of the store owners who demarcate the areas that the vehicles can park, the width of the vehicles, sort of, you know, be more specific. Can we get anything like that done before the Fourth of July or not?
Probably not, we're looking to get the crosswalks painted.
Yeah.
The maroon. We ordered the paint last year, and it was too late in the season to apply it because, you know, the winter and the plow would just scrape it off, so within the next week or so, we would like to get those crosswalks painted at least.
Okay.
Get our flowers and the flags up, and our garbage cans out.
We're gonna move that crosswalk on, next to the gazebo, because that interferes with trailers.
The one down on the waterfront project?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's already been taken care of. We're supposed to do it today, but it's not, and get done tomorrow.
Get done tomorrow. We're gonna move it west.
Yes, I've come up west, where there's more strictly, it's going straight.
Yeah, straighten that curve, that's easier.
Either that or right before, you know?
I know, I've gotten a lot of enough people that...
Well, yeah, you can't, now you go around, you kick the curve, or...
Yeah. I'm happy with it.
Junior, Junior made a suggestion to me today when I was down there, and I thought it was excellent. From the crosswalk, the sidewalk on the north side to, I don't know, down to the next manhole or whatever it is, put tarmac in there when there are tarmac, because you know what's happening, all the gravel's coming up on the road.
Yep. Yeah.
He said, they're turning like that wide.
I think with that sign here, they're turning sharp and they're cutting up on...
It was there, it was there before we put the sign up too, the gravel.
Yeah, on the shoulder?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That's true.
We want to be careful about the issue of the car driving close to the sidewalk. That's the thing you have to be careful of.
The lane or spot there.
It could be a double-edged sword.
Well, if they drive close down, they throw all the gravel on the road, you got a mess there.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of gravel in the road, you know, when you mess it up.
Kind of figure out a way to... And we put, we plan on putting, you guys have handicap parking there, you're gonna pay, but can we put some more parking area next to the gazebo? Because people are gonna pull right, like I remember I mentioned north of Delgar's...
On the grass, and they've been tearing everything up.
Right. But you could put one spot there on that, or you could put it north of, right north of the handicap parking, you could put two cars parked parallel to the sidewalk before, right at the end of like Delgar's property. There could be room for two cars, because people are gonna park on the grass anyway.
If the board approves it, mark them out, and I can, we can do it.
I think we should. I think that would solve.
Huh? They can look at it, see what we're talking.
You know what I mean, right?
Doesn't make any difference, I mean...
Well, I think that it gets, the street is too narrow.
One, this spring, somebody just pulled right in there on their wheels. I mean, it was viciously done, it wasn't done to park there.
I know, but if you tar it, people can at least pull in, you know? They're gonna anyway, unless you put a barrier there.
Nothing, like you're doing, you're restricting the road.
Right. Anyway, we'll take a look at it.
That's all I have. Thanks, Brian. Opening meeting to the public, anybody wish to address the board may do, so just time. Go ahead.
I just want to thank all of you for the past year for the support that you've shown the library. And in that view, May 30th is my last official day up here, and, let's see, Donna Racine's bringing the drinks, Andy's bringing the bowls and the flatware. I think Jim is bringing the garlic bread, and I'm bringing the spaghetti and spaghetti sauce for lunch. So if any of you want to stop by on Saturday around noon or one o'clock, you're more than welcome to. And not only will you say goodbye to me, but you will be...
And, uh, not only will you say goodbye to me, but you will be saying hello to your, uh, new library director technician. So I invite all of you, if you want to come, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen, and for those that don't know, Colleen's spent many years working on the plant bearing library system and it's helped us out tremendously, uh, with our, our computerizing and getting up to date and really helping, uh, our board do, uh, a good direction, good direction for the library and a great, done fantastic job, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just thanks, Colleen, from the board. We certainly appreciate what was done.
Thank you.
God is on track, finally.
Well, and hopefully you'll keep on track because you have a wonderful village up here and you are primed to really show people what a library can do for a small village and the difference that it can make to the people of the village.
Great, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, sir, I have a couple items for you.